Regular meeting of the Salem City Council is being held in person today, Thursday, July 17th at 2025, 2025 at 7:00 PM for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice that this meeting was posted on July 15th, 2025 at 3:29 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV and Zoom unless technological issues interrupt the transmission. Counselors absent, Counselor Watson felt. Counselor Cohen moved to disperse with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor, those opposed. I ask that you all stand and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Stott.
United States, America, through the Republic, over which we stand, and our leadership, indivisible, liberty, and our honor.
Thank you. May be seated. Salem City Council honors that this land is Namkeg or fishing place where generations of Namkeg people from the Pawtucket Band or the Massachusetts Tribe lived and passed through for centuries. We acknowledge that this is unceded indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts Tribe who continue to honor and hold this land to the present. Salem City Council is committed to having ongoing meaningful dialogue with the indigenous peoples who have presence in Salem in order to disseminate the legacies of oppressions and inequities that persist today. Public testimony. Public testimony is not to exceed 15 minutes. It is not a public hearing, a question and answer period. Sign up does occur 30 minutes prior to the meeting. The President shall, depending on the number of speakers, set a time limit not to exceed three minutes. We have three speakers signed up tonight, so they are allowed the full three minutes. And I will read the list. Caitlin Halapa.
Thank you, President Prozinski. My name is Caitlin Halapa. I live at 70 Boston Street in Wordstix, and I am here once again in support of removing minimum parking requirements. This isn't the first time you've all heard me talk about this, and I promise you it won't be the last. Previously, I've spoken about the history of minimum parking laws, the bygone problems they were designed to solve, and how they presently contribute to both our housing and climate crises. I've also spoken about the extreme cost of forced car dependency on our community, how contrary it is to our values of our city, and how minimum parking laws are a major contributing factor. But today, I actually want to speak to a question asked by Counselor Drizlo in the committee meeting of the whole to discuss this topic. The question was whether the parking study conducted by the city was accounting for the reality of residents working different shifts, like third shift or first shift when they were counting, and how that would impact the usage of the parking facilities. And I really appreciated the question because it's a great question to ask developers new, developers building new multifamily housing, or it would be if the answer mattered. Because with our current ordinance, they must build 1.5 spaces per unit regardless of the demographics of their residents, the affordability of the housing they're building, or where it's located in the city. Now, a developer can seek out a variance from the zoning board to build less parking, but that extra steps, time, and cost, which facilitates a different issue I've heard many of you speak about, that only large developers are really able to deal with our red tape here in Salem. These developers are able to seek a variance because they can afford to delay the project a bit in the hopes of increasing their profits, because they know, and we know, that the parking needs for every project are different, and they do not need to build the amount currently mandated. We know this because the city painstakingly counted 870 spaces, seven Riley plazas worth of wasted space, and only 14 existing developments. According to the mayor, we could build 436 housing units in that space. We could, and we should. This council should absolutely eliminate minimum parking requirements for new multifamily housing, and the city must explore how we can make better use of the land we already have designated and developed as multifamily. We can absolutely do infill development and work with property owners to build housing that we desperately need without even touching other land. So I know there's going to be a public hearing. You know I'll be back for it. And I really think this amendment just needs to be the start of serious parking reform in Salem. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Tontat.
I interviewed you for the Tree Commission's alternate position last week, and I want to comment on the selection process. For almost two years, I served on the Lorax Task Force, which formed the Tree Commission. Recently, I advocated for and worked with the Tree Commission to plant 15 trees in Gagne Park. I rallied my neighbors and worked to maintain these trees for the past two years as required by DCR. I started and maintained two sustainable pollinated gardens since 2013. I have volunteered with my part food farm and the Bittersweet Brigade, which helps to free trees from the chokeholds of the bittersweet vines. So it was really discouraging to find out that the criteria used to pick the alternate was the graphic design skills of the nominee. No one asked me or the other applicant if we had graphic design skills. Had they asked, they would have found out that I actually took graphic design and art classes and had a size small business doing graphic design for about eight years. I currently use an open source graphic design tool, and I didn't mention it because I thought I was there to interview for a tree-related position. Had the same question been asked of every applicant or tell them at the start of the meeting they needed to have graphic design skill, the selection process would have been fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia King.
Hi, my name is Lydia King. I live at Four Forest Avenue here in Salem. I'm just here to speak in favor of lowering the parking minimums, and I'm excited to see it going to a public hearing and looking forward to getting more feedback from the community. I just wanted to speak to, you know, I think everyone knows we have a housing crisis here in Salem, and one of my favorite punchlines is there is no silver bullet when it comes to housing in Salem. So this is one of many fantastic solutions. I'm excited to see that we are continuing to pursue. I think Caitlin actually mentioned, I love going after Caitlin because she mentioned so many fantastic things, but it lowers costs. I think it benefits smaller and more local developers, which I think that we all agree we'd love to see when development's happening, it being smaller and more local developers. And I also want to note that when I first moved to Salem as an adult, I actually lived in one of those 14 large complexes that was studied for the parking study that they did, you know, and that was one of the complexes where, you know, it was about 40% of that units, that building's units, parking units were sitting empty overnight. And obviously, that was disappointing to see because, you know, that could have been housing. But the other thing that is interesting, just, I went to some of the community feedback sessions in March and heard from people, and then also read the summary of the feedback. And one of the concerns that people had that really resonated with me was temporary parking spots for home aides, like for healthcare aides, for seniors who need that type of aide worker to visit, and how this could possibly negatively impact those people. And I just wanted to add that as someone who lived in one of those complexes and ran the neighborhood, like, group for it, that was actually one of the biggest issues we had, is that those large corporate landlords, they number those spots and they force you to pay for them. And so people who actually needed just like a spot once a week for an aide or, you know, for 20 minutes a day for an aide, were being forced to spend a huge amount of money to actually pay for a whole parking spot just for that person to use it very temporarily. So, you know, it's, want more housing, and I think this would help create it, but I also just want to point out that those large corporate landlords, when, you know, obviously they're getting the variances a lot, but when they're not, they're using the parking lots as like a revenue stream and kind of not even helping the types of concerns we'd want to help and think about when we're talking about having more parking options. So happy to see you all moving forward with it and looking forward to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there isn't anyone signed up on Zoom for public comments, so that ends hearings, I mean, the public comment period. Hearings, none, appointments and reappointments. Madam Clark.
We have held from the last meeting the mayor's reappointment of Alexandria Pinarro Shields of 7 Bristol Street to the registrar of voters with a term to expire June 25th, 2028.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that we, for confirmation by roll call vote.
Counselor Varela moves for confirmation by roll call vote under discussion.
Thank you, Counselor, President Prozinski. I just wanted to thank Ms. Pinero Shields for her continued commitment to the Board of Registars. She's very well-respected, and I'm glad that she wants to continue to serve on this board. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Marsillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Drizlo?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Hattler?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
Yes. On the appointment of Alexander Pinero Shields to the registry of voters, we have 10 councils present, one absent, count is 10 to zero. In favor? Matter passes. Madam Clark.
We have the mayor's appointment of the following with terms to expire. Tom Southerton to the Race Equity Commission, Craig Bilado to the Recycling and Sheath Path Advisory Committee, and Gina Flynn to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move that it be held under the rules.
Counselor Varela moves that these be held under the rules. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor of this being held under the rules. Matter carries. Further appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's appointment of Joan Benedetto of 1 Green Street to the Salem Cultural Council with a term to expire July 13th, 2026. This is for informational purposes only.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move this be received and filed.
Counselor Merkel, moves it be received and filed under discussion?
Thank you. The mayor has appointed Joan Benedetto of 1 Green Street to the Salem Cultural Council, and Ms. Benedetto will be filling the seat previously held by Kristen Verberen with a term to expire July 13th, 2026. A little information for everyone, Ms. Benedetto is a graduate from London Academy of Music and Dramatic Art and holds a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Film from New York University Tisch School of the Arts, and she has an extensive, wide-ranging background in theater, film, and journalism, and is looking forward to becoming more involved with the local Salem arts community through her work on the cultural council. And I'd like to note that pursuant of state law, no city council confirmation is necessary for this appointment, and I want to thank Ms. Benedetto for her willingness to serve on the cultural council.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion being, that this being received and filed in favor? Matter carries. Communications from the mayor. Madam Clark.
That the sum of $51,100 is hereby appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund to the annual priority Small Repairs Upgrades FF and E Associated Improvements account for the design portion of the cost necessary to begin repairs at the Salem Fire Department Station 2 in accordance with the recommendation of his honor, the mayor.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move adoption by roll call vote.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote under discussion.
Thank you for a little background information on this. In late June, while engine 2 was backing into the fire station on North Street, the truck struck the side of the bay doorway, and fortunately, no one was injured, but, and none of the apparatus was, was damaged as well. But the door did sustain damage and repairs are necessary, and these funds are for the first phase of the project for interior demolition to evaluate the structural damage. And the city is pursuing a claim with our insurance company that may help defray some of the costs. And there is more information about this in the backup documentation from the mayor and Chief Dion.
Counselor Stott.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Thank you for the summary from Chair Merkel. Just to add a little more color, when the fire department needs to back into that station on North Street, there's about two-inch clearance on either side, so it's a very tight squeeze. So kind of understandable how this could happen. They are going through MIA for possible reimbursement, but also looking at it to possibly change the opening so they have a little more clearance, which I think is the smart route to go. So this has my full support.
Thank you. Counselor Merkel.
Thank you. Yeah, it's nail-biting to watch, and I agree with Counselor Stott.
Also, that's one of the oldest active fire stations in the country. It has historical value. It's got a, it holds a piece of Salem when you take a, take a good look at it, and it's actually been in several commercials in the past, too. So anything to preserve that building is just added, adds to the character of the city and the character of its people. Counselor Merkel moves for adoption by roll call vote. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Stott?
Yes.
Counselor Marsillo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Drizlo?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Hattler?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Prozinski?
Yes. On the matter of appropriating $51,000 from the General Stabilization Fund to fix the doors at the North Street Fire Station, we have 10 members present, one absent, all 10 members in favor. Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to pickup of large items fee. Be it ordained that the City Council of the City of Salem, Mass. has filed Section 1, Chapter 36, Section 36-4, Pickup of Large Items Fee is hereby amended by deleting paragraph D in its entirety and replacing it with the following. Residents are responsible for paying the fee of $20 for the collection of each bulky item and the fee of $40 for a mattress or box spring, which shall be paid directly to the city, city collection collectors, contractors, excuse me. Section 2 of this ordinance shall take place by effect by provided by city charter.
Counselor Hattler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for adoption for first passage.
Counselor Hattler moves for adoption, first passage, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it's just based on the new waste management contract, takes bulk item pickup from 1873 up to $20, and lowers the mattress pickup from $50 down to $40.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am really excited about this because it also includes freon-containing items like air conditioners and things like that, which are constantly left out, or people don't know where to return them, and also CRTs, so TVs and computer monitors. And so to be able to have them collected at the curb instead of people waiting to e-waste or whatever, and this way we can actually monitor them better, I think is terrific, so I'm really supportive of this.
Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you, President. I'm also very excited about this, but for a different reason. This was something that was added last year when we talked about this ordinance, and we specifically asked that the, that the amounts for the fees be included in the ordinance, even though it would have to be updated whenever they make changes of the contract, in, in order to make it transparent to the public and to everyone in the city, on the city council, how these fees are changing up and down. And so I was surprised that the mattress pickup actually went down, and I think that's significant. Like, so it's working, and are adding this to the ordinance and giving this, you know, the light of day so that people know what's going on is important, and so I just wanted to point that out.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Hattler's move for the adoption, first passage of this matter? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications of the mayor?
We've ordered that the city of Salem hereby accepts the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 54, which authorizes municipalities to set a minimum threshold for taxation of personal property and hereby sets the minimum taxable value at $1,000. Personally, personal property accounts valued below this amount shall be exempt from taxation.
Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Prozinski. I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption, under discussion.
Thank you. Yes, the mayor spoke to me about this a couple of weeks ago, and I'm excited about it. To tell you a little bit more about it, this order is to adopt a section of Mass. General Law that would provide a measure of tax relief to an estimated 187 small businesses here in Salem. Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, authorizes a city, through local action, to establish a minimum value under which personal property accounts are exempt from taxation. This order adopts this section of statute and establishes that minimum threshold at $1,000. Not only will this extend some tax relief to our micro and small businesses here in Salem, and it's interesting, we have a majority of micro businesses, it will improve the efficiency of municipal operations, where in some cases, the cost to the city to collect these smaller tax payments actually exceeds the amount owed, so it's a win-win. And this personal property tax is primarily on assets such as equipment, furnishings, machinery, and as of now, 230 Massachusetts municipalities, about 65% have adopted this exemption to at least some, some financial marker, and there's more info about this in the backup documentation. And I also want to thank Stephen Cortez, our Director of Assessing, for, for the work on this. And I also, you know, received later today, I have many more details, too, on landing on the $1,000 exemption mark, being best practice, which was determined by our assessing department. And yeah, I'm excited to have this in front of us.
Any further discussion? Counselor Varela.
Thank you, President Prozinski. So concerning this matter, I, I guess my only question is how the city assessor is evaluating personal property. I know in the future, in the, in the past with, with my business and my small farm here in Salem, I feel like sometimes some of our personal property assets are a little overvalued. For me, I see the intent in this, but for me, I'd like a little more information on how everything is being assessed when it comes to an actual dollar amount. I think that that needs to be a little more clear as far as how everything's being assessed. So for that reason, I'd like a motion to put this in committee.
Counselor Varela makes a motion to put this in committee, seconded by Counselor Stott. Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel?
Yes, I will offer some more information on that question, and also, we have Mr. Cortez here tonight in case we want to get And also, we have Mr. Cortez here tonight, in case we want to get some further information directly. In my conversation with him, how they evaluate it might be a different conversation, but as far as landing on the $1,000 exemption, only 187 accounts would be removed from the tax roll and shifting just 2,000 plus, a very small percent of the tax levy, onto remaining properties. However, at the $2,000 exemption, the number of exempt accounts more than doubles, and the taxable value jumps from $97,000 at a $1,000 marker to $376,000 at the 2,000 marker. So I do have some more information on how they landed on it. As far as the timing on this, we are getting the city is being we have a reeval in place for the city that's happening mid-September, and we don't know when exactly that will be. And also, the feedback, you know, in my conversation was that the state also likes to see what we have in place somewhat ahead of time. And a holdup of this would risk that all the small businesses we're trying to exempt would not be exempt in time and would have to pay. So that was one reason I that was the reason I didn't motion to go to committee, because I don't want to see additional questions hurt their opportunity to be exempt. But I'd like to ask permission and motion to have Mr. Cortez address the council.
Any further discussion? Counsel Cohen.
Suspend the rules.
Before you do, before Mr. Cortez comes up here, I just have a comment. Yeah, I was fine with voting on it, I'm also fine with going to committee, but my question to the city staff would be, like, if the timing is such a tight issue, why are we confronted with something where we only have this meeting before the reevaluation? This should have there's no way that the city didn't know about this, so that we couldn't have voted on this in the spring. So I'm troubled by that, because basically, we're being told that we're being kind of held hostage, like, if we don't vote on this thing, we're going to injure businesses. But if the city had done its diligence and put it in front of us before, we wouldn't have to worry about it. We could have had a committee meeting and everything else. So I'm actually somewhat troubled by the timing being a criteria for us to vote tonight.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I agree with Counsel Cohen 100%. Why are we waiting until one meeting before the deadline to bring this up and bring this into council? I just it doesn't sit well. Thank you.
Counsel Stott.
Thank you, President Prozinski. We are also tying our own hands here by choosing not to have a meeting in August. I'm just going to highlight that right there. But I have questions as well. I mean, I don't think it would be the worst scenario if it passed tonight. I was up for that, but I think it does deserve a committee conversation, primarily to answer questions from the council, but also to use that as a tool for the public to understand how this process will work and how it will impact them and what possible changes may occur.
Any further discussion? Counsel Marcello.
Yeah, I think I was surprised that this wasn't actually going to committee, and I mentioned that to Counsel Merkel, and she actually did get some more information for me. I still think that this needs a public hearing. And I also think that if it's really an issue that we're going to pass something in September that might miss some billing, we could we could add something that would do that would refund that money after the fact, if we're going to pass this, if that's truly the issue that's going on here. So I'm not as concerned about the time constraint, and I will add, I think, you know, it's not our assessors' problem that this came in, that we don't have an August meeting. I will have to agree with Counsel Stott there. I think this is something we need to think about, is this this time between our July meeting and our September meeting is very long, and we always end up having a special meeting in August. So this would fit in nicely. We could have the meeting in August and take care of this then if we need to, and we wouldn't be, you know, feel pressured to vote on something before it's ready. But I would also agree with this going to committee. Thank you.
Counsel Merkel.
Yes, agreed. There's always the option to have a special meeting in August.
On Counsel Verella's motion that this matter be moved to committee, Committee on Government Services, I assume.
What about the motion to suspend the rules? To hear from?
First motion is his to send into committee, which would kind of make sense if we're going to if it's going to be sent into committee, then we're giving Mr. Cortez, thank you for coming in and being available for this, but if it's going to go in a committee, then it can be fully explained. If it's not voted in to go to committee, then Mr. Cortez can we can suspend the rules and listen to Mr. Cortez. So let's let's vote on the first motion first. All those in favor of this? I'm sorry, it's still in the discussion. Counsel Cohen.
Which committee is it in? Is this A and F? Because this is a financial matter.
Okay, all right.
And co-posted, yeah.
On Counsel Verella's motion that this matter be moved to the Committee on Administration and Finance, co-posted with the committee of the whole. All those in favor? All those opposed? The unanimous send to committee. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. We'll look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Further communications from the mayor.
We have an ordinance to amend the city of Salem zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to refer to the planning board to hold a joint public hearing.
Counsel Hapworth moves that this be referred to the planning board for a joint public meeting, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I guess, the opposite of the condo conversion ordinance. We are now at the beginning of a relatively long public process here on parking minimums, so there's a lot of discussion to be had here. I would just encourage anyone interested in this to read Donald Schub's The High Cost of Free Parking, because whether you own a car, don't own a car, whether you live in an apartment, a single-family house, have a garage or not, we're all paying a high price for overbuilding on parking, and about 40% of the required parking is sitting open, and it's bare pavement, and it's stormwater runoff, and heat islands, and higher prices for our homes. So looking forward to this discussion, and thank you, everyone, for the hard work on this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of moving this matter to the planning board to hold a public joint meeting? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor.
We have ordered the Salem City Council schedule a committee of the whole meeting in September 2025 for the purpose of receiving an update on the Salem High School building project.
Counsel Stott.
I move that this be referred to the committee of the whole.
Counsel Stott refers that this be moves that this be referred to the committee of the whole, under discussion.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I'm actually missing one of the high school building committee meetings this evening, but that is a committee that has been in the process for the past three years of going towards the goal of a new high school for our community, and I'm very excited for you all to receive an update as to where that stands, because things are moving along.
Are you got any further discussion? All those in favor of moving this to the committee of the whole? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clark.
We have an order that the City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs to meet prior to the September 11, 2025 City Council meeting to discuss language for a light shield ordinance.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that this is referred to the Committee of Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Cohen moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for three years, I didn't realize this was a thing, and then all of a sudden, I started getting phone calls, and I was told, hey, call the police department, it's a police issue, the police referred me to the Building Department, who told me that there's a whole bunch of communities, 64 in fact, that have such an ordinance. And basically, what it is, is, you know, when a commercial or private property has some kind of lighting that infringes on another property, you know, shining into bedroom or whatever, and so I had meetings with the Building Commissioner, Gail Kubik, one of the inspectors, who said they actually get decent amount of calls. I've talked to some counselors who've gotten the same thing. And so created a working group with James Wheelock, John Giardi, and both Gail Kubik and Vula Fanoz from the Building Department. And we're almost actually done with the ordinance. It's fairly simple. Basically, what's been happening now, and there's been some decent amount of issues in the city, is they call our electrician, John Giardi, who because he's the nicest person in Salem, goes out and tries to work out whatever differences exist. We've actually the city has actually paid for light shields or recommended new fixtures, and yet we've kind of encountered some things where some one of the parties might be a little bit resistant. So looking forward to working with Chair Hapworth on a date, and I will reach out to him as soon as the language is ready, but I think people will find that this is really just another thing that can help city departments resolve some issues that will help people in the community and businesses.
Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Hapworth, and thank you, Counsel Cohen, for bringing this in. As sleepy and quiet as Ward 7 is, this is one of the largest issues we have in Ward 7. Going to school for lighting, I think this is lighting and how it actually appears on other properties is is one of those things that a lot of people don't think about. And I think that having shielding and giving our building commissioner the ability to enforce this will go a long way. I know that when it comes to lighting, you know, talk to your neighbors as a courtesy, but a lot of people don't understand that sometimes lighting does affect people on other budding properties. So thank you for bringing this in. I think this is a small incremental step to just having a peace and quality of life for our neighbors. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to mention something. People on the council may remember that a few years ago, we bought all the city the light fixtures in the city from National Grid, and they're LEDs. And one of the things that came up, which I didn't know about, is like the lumens, the brightness, what color? And we actually, in the city, depending on what whether it is in a residential area or not, our city engineer has actually installed lighting that is reflective, so it doesn't actually bother people in the city. We don't always notice it, because when we're walking on the sidewalk, we don't necessarily know it's a yellow or a blue light or whatever. But I've actually learned way more since I brought this thing up than I ever wanted to learn about lighting. But I agree with Counsel Verella. I think in some cases, this is only going to resolve issues that we can't resolve, you know, in a neighborly way.
Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I am one of those counselors who's gotten calls on this, and it's always a tricky situation, because you're trying to solve a neighborhood dispute, which is never easy. And I think that education, I think this will bring some education also, because I think people's gut reaction is this is a safety issue, and so the brightest light they can put in the front of their house is the most important thing that they can do. And it's not always that. Like, it there's ways to the ways that you can make your create a safe environment around your house and not blast your light out to the whole neighborhood. So and then there's also the institutional, like Salem Hospital, I've definitely gotten complaints about light coming from their parking lots. So I'm glad you did this. Thank you, because I just have not been able to put this on my plate. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Being that I've been installing lighting for about 35 years, this is more for the public. And a designer once told me a long time ago that a little bit of light goes a long way in the dark. So you don't need a 1,000-watt light bulb on the side of your house that's lighting up your neighbor's living room just to light up your driveway. And to Counsel Cohen's point, when it comes to LED lighting, there are different colors. It goes anywhere from 2,300K, which is 20, and then all the way up to like 5,000. 5,000 is like an operating room light, and it's very white, bright, and people are using those in their yards, and it's just not necessary. So this is definitely a good thing for, you know, but we got to keep in mind, this also falls on the bike paths that are behind people's houses. So we got to be careful as a city, what we're installing in areas that the city actually maintains and owns, and I know John's usually pretty good about that, but it's just one of those things that it could definitely take a look at. Thank you. I believe that the police department would also be very interested in this, and I would extend an invitation to them, because the first people that get called when the lighting is when one neighbor's lighting is too bright, it's shining in their house, it's shining in their windows, it's the police department. And a lot of times, it's a difficult situation to try to to try to figure. It's a quality of life issue, there's no doubt about that. And seeing that something is being done about it is is the right direction. Any other further discussion? All those in favor of moving this matter to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs? All those in favor? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions.
We have a resolution affirming the city of Salem's commitment to democratic principles and constitutional governance.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you, President Prozinski. Whereas we reflect in the days following Independence Day, July 4, 2025, the city of Salem recognizes the importance of honoring not only the founding of our nation, but also the principles that have sustained American democracy for nearly two and a half centuries. And whereas Salem, Massachusetts, has a long and proud tradition of civic engagement, justice, and resistance to authoritarian power rooted in our Commonwealth's central role in the creation of American democratic institutions. And whereas Salem is a community that understands through its own history the consequences of unchecked authority and the necessity of preserving democratic institutions, protecting individual rights, and holding those in power accountable. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is home to the oldest functioning written constitution in the world, drafted in 1780 by John Adams, which served as a model for the United States Constitution by establishing a government grounded in the separation of power, checks and balances, an independent judiciary, and Declaration of Rights. Whereas these constitutional principles are the foundation of our democracy and freedoms, not merely abstract ideals, and they remain essential to the well-being of our nation and the integrity of our government. And whereas in the first six months of his second term, President Donald Trump and members of the administration have repeatedly taken actions to disregard the constitutional separation of powers, including ignoring lawful court orders, undermining civil liberties, eroding due process, attempting to restrict birthright citizenship, withholding congressionally appropriated funds, shuttering federal agencies, and engaging in unauthorized military operations in violation of the War Powers Act of 1973. Whereas these actions represent a sustained threat to the constitutional order and have particularly targeted vulnerable populations, immigrants, LGBTQIA+, individuals, students, and veterans, many of whom live and contribute to the city of Salem. And whereas efforts to curtail civil protections, suppress dissent, and weaken institutions of education and healthcare directly impact the people of Salem and contradict the inclusive and resilient values that define our community. And whereas the people of Salem and their elected city council are committed to upholding democratic norms and standing against unlawful or authoritarian governance in all its forms. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Salem hereby calls upon our congressional delegation and all members of Congress to defend and uphold the Constitution of the United States, restore the constitutional balance of powers, reverse and prevent unlawful or authoritarian actions by any branch of the government, and reaffirm that no person, regardless of office, stands above the law in this country. Affirms the city of Salem's unwavering commitment to democratic principles, civic responsibility, and the rule of law. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the members of the Massachusetts congressional delegation and entered into the public record. It's a statement of Salem's values and a call for action to preserve the integrity of our constitutional democracy, and I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Counsel Davis moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion. Counsel Davis.
Thank you, President Prozinski. This is something that was brought to my attention by some Salem residents, and specifically some members of North Shore Indivisible, that pointed out that this is that the Boston City Council was considering a very similar resolution, looking ahead to July 4, Independence Day, and Day, and wanting to use that as an opportunity to stand up for democracy and American principles, and call out the federal administration's work to undermine those important values. And, you know, kind of calling on Salem to consider the same. And so that is what I hope that we can do today, and I want to recognize and thank State Representative Manny Cruz for some important suggestions about language, specifically around immigrants, that I think is really important. So, yep, that's it.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I believe the spirit of this resolution, resolution is good, but I have some concerns. For example, in the second whereas, it says Salem has a long and proud tradition of civic engagement and resistance to authoritarian power, but there's no examples of that. The next one says, through our history, the consequences of unchecked authority. Again, no examples, because this is out of the Boston resolution. In the, in the call to action, there's two things that unfortunately, with the way our legislature, our federal legislature is constituted, it's really hard for me to see how people in our delegation can restore the constitutional balance of powers and reverse and prevent the awful or authoritarian acts by any branch of government. But I do want to offer this, because we have nine representatives and two senators. And I did a whole bunch of hours and hours of research to figure out if any or all of them had committed to things this year, just in 2025, that address the things in this resolution. And unfortunately, I couldn't find anything from Reps Lynch, Trahan, Neal, Moulton, Otchenkloss, and Keating. But I do want to mention a couple of things, because I do want to recognize our legislators who have been fighting to protect democracy, immigrants, voting rights, and LGBT community. So I'm just going to take a little bit of time and list some of the things that they've been either sponsored or co-sponsored this year. Senator Markey, bill to provide enhanced protections for election workers. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll just give you a sense. A bill to protect human rights and enhance opportunities for LGBTQ people around the world. A resolution expressing the sense of the Senate of the United States, tribal nations, to achieve the goals of the Paris Agreement, which even though is for climate, actually addresses functioning democracies not only here and around the world. Specific to this resolution, the panic defense, prohibiting the panic defense. A bill to permit legally married same-sex couples to amend their filing status for tax returns outside the statute of limitations. Also, one of the co-sponsors of the Equality Act, which aims to prohibit discrimination on sex, gender identity, and sexual orientation. Senator Warren, big sponsor of the Voting Rights Act, the John Lewis Act that has been revised this year, has put acts prohibiting durational residency requirements on all federal elections, mandating the acceptance of student IDs to meet the state voter identification requirements in federal elections, establishing a grant program for states to encourage youth involvement in elections, requiring federal data collection and youth voter registration election participation, is a sponsor of the Anti-Corruption and Public Integrity Act alongside Representative Jaya Paul. And this bill, I'm reading this one because it's important, proposes a comprehensive set of reforms to combat corruption in Washington, strengthening our ethic rules, boosting government transparency, and overhaul campaign finance laws. And she's also a sponsor of the opposition to measures such as threats to democracy. So very specific to things that are outlined here. Rep Jim McGovern is a supporter, one of the leaders of the John Lewis Voting Rights Act that I referred to, the revised version, is also a sponsor of the Delivery for Democracy Act, really important. Rep Ayanna Pressley has commissioned a study, as a bill to commission a study to develop preparation proposals for Afro-Americans, and is also the most vehement poser of the SAFE Act, which requires documentation by all voters in federal elections. Rep Catherine Clark, Child Care Infrastructure Act, to provide assistance for childcare infrastructure, Child Care Workforce Development Act, to help early childhood, the Women's Health Protection Act, seeking to protect the ability to determine whether to continue and end pregnancy, the John Lewis Voting Rights Act, she's again part of that, and she is one of the lead sponsors of the Equality Act, which aims to prohibit discrimination, as I said before, which also Senator Warren did. So I really want to point this out, because in my mind, this resolution makes it look like our, you know, some of our representatives aren't doing enough. And I do believe at least these five are doing more than enough, and we should all look to them as examples, as I do. So that's my concern about this, because there's no real specifics in this about things that Salem has done, and really no acknowledgement of the good work that people like Senator Markey and Senator Warren, Representative Pressley are doing to fulfill all the requests in this. And it actually gives like a concept that none of them are doing that. It's asking them to do something that at least these five are actually doing. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I appreciate this coming into council and its content. The impact of the harmful actions coming out of Washington are being felt here in Salem. I engage with people that are worried and frightened on a regular basis, and rightly so. Our efforts to address food insecurity are being directly negatively affected. And I really appreciated Counselor Cohen's information on all the actions that are being taken. I appreciate the state officials that are stepping up and, you know, really, really doing, doing great work out there. And I appreciate and see, you know, the intent of this, you know, as being, you know, goals to reach and what to continue, continue to speak out about, and to affirm Salem's commitment to democratic principles. And I also have gotten requests, you know, from residents for the council to make statements, to be speaking out in this, about this nature. And I particularly got a lot of those requests around the 4th of July, that we, and the people that I have put it on their radar, that this was in the council tonight, were really grateful to hear about it. So, yeah, for those, for those reasons, I do appreciate that this is in front of it and the intent of it to reaffirm our commitment to our democracy.
Any further discussion? Counsel Marcello.
Thank you, President. I wonder if we can come to some sort of a compromise, because I, I, when I read this, I was like, yes. But I do think that there are some, some asks that we can make that are specific to Salem. And I think that the healthcare changes that are being made, the changes to the Education Department, and food insecurity, like we can list specific things that are besides the immigration issues, that are specifically being done, that are impacting residents in Salem. If not today or tomorrow, in nine months, people are going to start feeling the impact. So I wonder if there's any sort of appetite from the counselor's part to take a little bit more time and craft this very specific to Salem, and specific as for what we're seeing in our community. Yep.
Any further discussion? Counsel Davis.
Yeah, I would say absolutely, and happy to hear suggestions from folks. So I guess it would be the ask, not to send this to the committee, right? But for me to...
Withdraw.
Withdraw the, the resolution today.
And I agree with Counsel Marcello. Let's, let's get this so it benefits our citizens, our people here in Salem. Let's give it a local flair instead of a national opinion. So I agree. Counsel Davis moves to withdraw his, the resolution, save it for a later date. All those in favor? No need for a vote? Okay, very good. Withdrawn, thank you. Committee reports. Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. City of Salem and City Council, July 17, 2025, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the whole, who has referred the matter of an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to condominium conversions, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption for second passage as amended.
Counsel Hapworth moves for second passage under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just, just a note, we're going to have to vote on the, we had one amendment, so we're going to have to vote on that amendment before we get, before we get to the, the final vote. But just a note here, this marks the end of a very long and thoughtful process on the condo conversion ordinance over the past year, several years, actually. This policy has gone through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, City Council, multiple rounds of committee work, home rule petition at the state. We've had numerous public meetings, heard from both residents, renters worried about losing their homes, and property owners concerned about their investments. Our job has been to weigh these impacts carefully and to do everything we can to support stability for folks who are struggling. This ordinance doesn't prevent condo conversions, but it does set some guardrails to make sure that when those conversions happen, we give tenants time, notice, and financial support so they're not left scrambling. Renters are the backbone of Salem, many of them are teachers, nurses, city workers, and seniors who make up the fabric of our community. Helping them stay housed is part of the work we're all signed up here to do. I want to thank everyone who provided feedback along the way, city staff for their diligent work, Lori Stewart specifically, the Housing Stability Coordinator, for helping to guide us through this process, and to my colleagues for their thoughtful consideration and debate. So we, what we did here is we have, this is for second passage, in the meeting, we amended the amendment that had been previously amended on the amended ordinance. Specifically, we removed the language that was previously added, stating that we had 50% within 15 days prior to the moving date, and 50% within 10 days after the date. That language was just added in, it's now being removed out, so that it says relocation benefits shall be paid to the tenant within 10 days after the date on which the tenant vacates the unit, and it goes and continues forward. And I'll send this over to you, Maureen. Again, thank you. I think a lot of folks have had questions throughout this process. I think all of my colleagues, whether, wherever you fall on this, on this issue, have, have engaged in this process thoughtfully and in good faith. We're constantly weighing the needs of everyone in the city, landlords, tenants, everyone who's impacted by this, and I think we came to a very good ordinance, and again, appreciate Lori for her hard work on this.
Any further discussion? Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I just want to go on the record saying that I disagree with this ordinance in a whole, being the fact that we're basically sending a message to anybody that wants to come and invest in our property and live here for a while. Don't do it, because we're going to hit you with a fee because you want to capitalize on your investment. To me, it's a form of extortion, and we're legitimizing extortion by forcing somebody to pay somebody else money because they want to capitalize on their investment. Now, if this ordinance came through and it was worded where there was a timeframe, five years, if you've lived in your house for five years or more, that's considered a family investment, you're excluded from this. It's geared towards investors, large investors, that come into the city, buy a two-family house, kick people out with the all intention of converting it to condos right from the get-go. To, at that case, having to pay the money would be considered a business transaction. They know it coming in, they have the funds to do it. All we're doing here is hurting the small people that invested in a piece of property in our city 10, 15, 20, 30 years ago, paid their taxes every year, like every other resident in the City of Salem that owns a property, and now we're saying, thank you for doing that, you want to capitalize your investment, well, you have to pay somebody because you want to, you want to, you want to cash in. You know, let's use an analogy of like, just say, investing in the stock market. I invest in the stock market, I do a great job investing in the stock market. Somebody else that doesn't invest in the stock market as well as I did, I go to cash in on my investment, are we going to tell, you're going to tell me that I have to turn around and give somebody my money because I did good in the stock market? It's the same thing. People buy property as an investment. They buy it for generational wealth. For us to sit here and tell them that you have to give money to your tenant because you want to cash in on your investment, and this could be somebody that's 74 years old, who wants to age in place, or even, even younger, 70 years old, wants to age in place, but can't afford it, because when they bought their house, their mortgage was less than what their taxes are now. So they can't afford that anymore. So they want to cash in, they want to say, you know what, I'm going to convert my first floor to a condo, I'm going to sell it, and now I can stay where I wanted to stay, where I wanted to live. So in my opinion, and this isn't just my opinion, I've talked to other people, I've talked to property owners, and I've talked to renters, and I twisted it around on renters. I said, what if this was you, and you own this piece of property, and you wanted to cash in on your investment that you've been paying for, for 30 years? And now all of a sudden, City of Salem is going to tell you, you can't do that, you have to wait. First of all, you have to give you a two-year, they're going to give you a two-year notice. Then you have to wait, or give them six grand, to turn around and convert your condo. There's a lot of people out there, I know for a few of them that I had talked to specifically, that they can't afford to give somebody $6,000 right from the get-go. I mean, and it's like a year-long process before you can even get into the permitting process, according to this, so that, what are they going to do? They're going to, you know, or you give the tenant two years' notice, not all tenants, because my family rented up until my father moved to Salem with my sister, but you have tenants out there that are going to say, hey, they're giving me two-year notice, they're going to convert this to a condo? I'm not going to pay my rent for two years. Whether they have to get the $6,000, which I was told they don't, if they haven't paid their rent, but two years of somebody not paying rent to a landlord, they have, now you're putting them in jeopardy of losing their piece of property, because they're not collecting that $25,000, $30,000 a year. And a lot of people buy two families and three families. I know my kids were both looking to purchase a multifamily as a security, so that they have the rent coming in, in case something happens, and they lose their job, or they get ill, they, their house is safe. So for this to go through, I honestly feel, and I would like to make a motion to put this back into committee, because even during the Ola meeting early, there were still a lot of gray areas that weren't answered, and I think all we're doing is hurting, and you're hurting the elderly, you're hurting, and you are hurting the renters, whether you want to believe it or not, because what's going to happen? If I have to turn around and tell a renter, now I don't own property, just for the record, but if I had to turn around and tell a renter, I'm giving, I'm giving you two years' notice that I'm going to convert this into a condo, well, your rent's going to end up going up a little bit, and I'm going to bank that money, so that you're paying your own $6,000 that you're telling me I have to pay somebody. It's just not right, it's not fair to the people that invested in our city years ago and lived here for this many years, to have to turn around and pay somebody $6,000, or even $8,000, so that they can cash in on their investment. It's 100% wrong, and I did talk to Beth Renad, and she said, well, it's not considered extortion because we have a legitimate reason to do it. Well, I disagree with that. In my opinion, this is extortion. And if this does pass for the public, and everybody that's out there, if you want to know how to get through this and get by this, I have loopholes already that haven't been figured out, or haven't been discussed. Give me a call, I'll help you through it. Thank you.
Counsel Cohen.
Thank you. I don't, as a city council, I don't want to be extorted by another city council that threatening us that if we pass something, it's going to go around what the rule is. The rule is the rule. But I'm moving the question, because as Counsel Hapworth said, Chair Hapworth said, we are now voting on the amendment to the amendment. So I move the question for that. That's before us right now.
Any further discussion? Counsel Marcello.
Did we do a vote on accepting the report? Nope. Can we do that first? Sorry.
On the acceptance of Counsel Hapworth's report from the Committee of all around this matter, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. On Counsel Hapworth's motion, that this be moved for second passage? The amendment be moved for second pa...
Amendment first.
So we're doing the amendment on the first passage?
Or just the amendment?
Okay. Counsel Hapworth's motion? On the second passage of the amendment? All those in favor?
Well, just to the amendment.
Yes. Okay. On Counsel Hapworth's motion to pass the amendment? All those in favor? All those opposed? On the matter of passing the second passage of the ordinance relative to condominium conversion?
And then we're under discussion?
Under further discussion? Under further discussion? Counsel Harvey.
I'd like to make a motion to keep it in committee if I could.
Counsel Harvey motions to keep it in committee. Counsel Jurislaw.
I second that. I still had some reservations on some of the language. Thank you.
On discussion on the motion to put it in committee, Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am adamantly against putting it back in committee, as well as a couple of my colleagues. I spent some time on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board as one of the council representatives when this was being worked on by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. And we spent a lot of time, we had lots of public meetings about this. There was nothing done in secret, and truthfully, and as I said in the committee, this should have happened three years ago. We waited almost three full years to get the petition back so that we could deliberate on it. I believe that not only do we have a housing crisis, but we have a number of things that we can do to mitigate those. And in my mind, one of the most important is not to eliminate condo conversions, but to slow it down. One of the things that Counsel Marcella brought up in a previous meeting was something that really resonated with me, and that is, I know on my street, and I've told the story, that I can from my living room see a number of three and four families that have all been bought by cash by investors, all been eventually turned into condos. In the process of turning them into condos, the rent was raised almost 100% for each one of the tenants. Only one tenant out of 15 apartments that this affected is still living on the street. And this idea about protecting investors, I'm really not concerned about that because you're an investor. If it's a good investment, great. You make your investment, just like the stock market. However, one of the things that we've eliminated, that Counsel Marcella brought up, was the ability for working-class families to do what my brother and I did. We got a little bit out of college, and with a little help from my mom, we bought a three-family in Cambridgeport when it wasn't one of the nicest places, and they had rent control, and we were getting $175 for rent for one of the apartments, but it enabled us to build equity, and we both bought a single-family home after that. So this is not happening because very few working-class families can compete with the investor. And the worst part of this is how many people in our community are being displaced and being forced to move out of Salem. In the meeting that we had in Ola before this, I brought up the example. I have a tenant that's looking for another place. They're paying about $1,600 for a one-bedroom. There is zero chance that they can find a place in Salem that they can afford under the circumstances. And for me, giving them $6,000, I said in the committee, isn't enough. I would give them more without conditions. I want to pass this three years ago. It's about time. I want to pass it today. I am going to raise my hand when I vote no to put this in committee.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Typically, I like to entertain any option to send to committee if people want to have discussion. In this case, this has had plenty of discussion going back several years, plenty of discussion for this body. There was nothing surprising that came out between 6:30 and 7:00 when we had a committee meeting. We also had several weeks between then and this committee meeting to have run language to the solicitor or discussed any potential changes and made motions in the meeting. Those didn't happen. There's nothing else we're going to learn in committee. Something I learned from Counsel Sergeant was that it's okay to vote no on something. If you look around and you see the will of the body and what it is, make your vote and move on. I think that we can see where the will of the body is here. I don't think anything is going to be gained from sending this back to committee. It's clear where the no votes are, and that's fine. Make that vote, and we move on.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I just want to reiterate one thing that I did say. You're not hurting the investor. You're hurting the people that have lived in their homes for multiple years. An investor that comes into this city has the money. They could care less about -- they do it all the time. It's called cash for keys in real estate. They want somebody out of their apartment, they give them a bunch of cash, they move out, they do what they got to do. Those are the people that have taken the apartments and turned them into condos. The small guy that might want to do it later on in life, they still have the apartments. So those are the people you're hurting. You're not hurting investors. An investor, to them to come in and take a two-family house and have to give out $12,000, they look at that, that's chump change to them. That's part of the process. That's the way they look at it. They include that into their financing when they go through the bank because they know they're going to make a bunch of money. But the people that lived in their homes, the small people that this is going to hurt, that might want to cash in on their investment, and when I say investment, I don't mean a stock market investment for them. I mean, they purchased a house for their family, and they want to pass it on, or they want to continue to live there, and they can't afford to anymore, and this would have been a way out for them. The big investors that just come into the city and buy the properties and turn around with all intention of converting them to condos, that's not who I'm looking out for. I'm looking out for the people that bought the houses 10, 15, 20 years ago that may need to cash in. Somebody like my father, who did, owned a two-family house with my sister. He ended up having to, forced to retire because of a heart attack. They sold the house, and he used the money he got from the sale of that house to live off of. He didn't have the opportunity to turn it into a condo, but those are the people that we're going to be hurting with this, not necessarily the big investors. Again, I work for some of those people. They don't care about $12,000. To them, it's chump change. They spend that to go to the Super Bowl. They could care less about spending $12,000 if they know they're going to make 1.2 million when they turn into two condos. Those are the ones that, they don't care. That's all I got to say.
Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozinski. I will not be voting to send this back to committee for the points that was made by Counsel Hapworth and the other counselors. There's been a lot of discussion on this. Time to move forward.
Counsel Marcella.
Thank you, President. I also will not be voting for that because there hasn't been any suggested changes. It just doesn't, you just don't want to pass it, which is fine. I want to say that, you know, one of the reasons why the real estate taxes are growing so fast for two- and three-family homes is because the sales of them are outpacing single-family homes, and I know that because I own one. And I look every year when we set the taxes, and those multifamily homes are going up very fast in relationship to other housing stock. And the reason is because people aren't necessarily doing the condo conversions themselves, they're selling them, because it's easier to just sell it and let the new owner turn it into condos. It's very hard to buy a two- or three-family home right now if you are a young person trying to find something that's affordable. In most cases, a single-family home is more affordable than buying a two- or three-family home because of the ability to create a condo. It's unfortunate. This is what we've been dealing with. This is why this discussion came up, because when that happens, when the people who have owned that two- or three-family home have owned it for several decades and want to move on to a new place, maybe warmer, that they're going for huge amounts of money, right? My question is, and I come back to this, and I think that this happened in a previous discussion, if you can't afford the $6,000 for your tenant, how are you affording the conversion costs? Because my house isn't ready to be converted. I can't just put it on the market and sell one of the units. You have to separate the electrical stuff. You have to make sure that the entrances are correct for separate, like, there's things that have to be done in these older two- and three-family homes that's going to cost money along with all the permitting. So that's my only question. I just feel like we are ready to pass this. We can come back to it after it's out there and it's being tested, and if we need to tweak it, we can tweak it, but I think we're ready to pass this right now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Just to be forward, I understand where Counsel Harvey's coming from. I would vote to put it back into committee for one reason and one reason only, and that's because there is an inequity between the investors and the people who own these pieces of property now, the little guy. And I think that that could be strengthened. Something could be in that, in this ordinance that would, investors have the money to be able to put into it. The people who have been in their houses, and we've heard from two of those people during a joint public hearing, heard from a gentleman in North Salem and a gentleman in South Salem who own three-family homes, and they talked about why it's unfair to the little guy, and it resonated with me. I just think, the basis of it, it's all good, but I don't think that there's a language that's in this ordinance as it sits that's protecting the little guy from the investor. And I know that I'm in the minority. This looks like it's going to pass tonight, and maybe later on someday we can change it if we have to take a look at it, but I'm going to vote for it to go in committee. So on Counsel Harvey's motion that this matter be put in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter does not carry. It does not go back into committee. Now, for the motion by Counsel Hapworth that this ordinance pass second passage? Do we need a roll call vote for this, Madam Clerk?
I'll request a roll call vote.
Do I have a second? Counsel Verella seconds, Madam Clerk.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Marcella?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Jurislaw?
No.
Counsel Harvey?
No.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
Counsel Prozinski?
No. On the second passage of the condo conversion ordinance, as adopted, we have seven yeas and three nays, matter carries. For the committee reports. Counsel Marcella.
Counsel Prozinski.
Thank you, President Marcella. The Committee of all was referred to the matter of meeting with the Prime Group. Representatives consulted for their present plans for Shetland Park and recommended that the matter be received and filed.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? And on adoption of the recommendation, Counsel Prozinski?
Thank you. On July 1st, last Tuesday, we had a, Tuesday before, we had the Prime Group who owns the property, owns the Shetland Properties, come in and give a very thorough presentation as to what their plans were to develop that property. If anybody hasn't seen that presentation and is interested in knowing what's going to happen at Shetland Properties, I would go onto YouTube if possible and look at, to the SATV government channel, and there was a very thorough presentation, a last about 25 minutes slideshow on exactly what the Prime Group wants to do with the property and how they want to integrate it with the neighborhood. It was very, a lot of questions were asked by city councilors, a lot of interest from the public on how this development is going to work for the city. So we digested everything and realized that this is the first step of a long process on what is actually going to happen at Shetland Properties, and it was moved that we receive and file this property, this recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Prozinski's motion that the presentation be received and filed, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries.
Thank you. For the committee reports, Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Prozinski. City of Salem, City Council, July 17, 2025. Committee on Government Services co-posted with the Committee of all to whom it was referred to the matter of City Council to delegate authority to the city clerk for use of City Council chambers, and the ante room with the City Council president's approval has considered said matter and would recommend it remain in committee.
As of all moves, this is matter remaining committee under discussion?
Thank you, President Prozinski. So we had a little bit of a back and forth at this meeting about this topic here, and the reason we went to committee is I know we have a lot to discuss with this. We're discussing a policy with council chambers, and it seemed like we were divisive on that. And I do believe that, you know, and apologies to Counsel Stott if I didn't let you know about the schedule of the meeting, but, you know, my intent is to really figure out what we got to do here immediately until we have a permanent solution for our chambers. So for that, I'm looking forward to another robust discussion about how we can make our city council chambers not only more ADAT accessible, but just work for everyone here in the city.
Any further discussion? Counsel Stott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to note that an ordinance change is not a temporary solution. It's pretty permanent. We just spent three or four years discussing an ordinance change. So respectfully, I did request this to go to committee, and I would like to be at that committee meeting to discuss the policy, and it was very interesting to listen to that meeting after the fact, where all of that was kind of disregarded, and this was noted as a temporary fix, which again, I would just reiterate that nothing about an ordinance change is a temporary fix. That's an ordinance change. An order with an end date, for example, would be a temporary fix. I am looking forward to discussing the policy that I know is being worked on. I don't, I think we could have been using all of this energy to work on that policy and have something in place by our September meeting, and hopefully we still will, but it was just a little discerning to find out about all of this in this manner. I will say, respect is like air. When it's there, no one notices, and when it's missing, it's all that can be noticed.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, I'm sorry.
We need to accept the report first.
On the acceptance of Counsel Verella's report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Carries. On Counsel Verella's motion that this matter remain in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Communications from city officials. I'm sorry, one more committee report. Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Prozinski. City Salem, City Council, July 17. City Salem, City Council, July 17, 2025. The Committee on Government Services co-posted with committee of hold, to whom was matter to, referred to the matter of the tree commission appointees' applications, has considered said matter and would recommend adoption.
On the acceptance of Counsel Verella's report, all those in favor? Those opposed? Under discussion.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. So, I'll start with the reappointment of Katie Goldfield. It's a very simple discussion. Katie has been with the committee for a few years now and would like to continue her reappointment. So, that was unanimously voted four to one absent for the reappointment of Katie Goldfield. Concerning Jacob St. Louis, the appointment to the arborist slash landscape architect, Mr. St. Louis has met all the requirements as being a certified arborist. And we appointed him four to one absent for that position as well. Concerning the appointment of the alternate for the general public, David Livingston, we did have a robust conversation about this. You know, for me, what I found a little problematic with how we came to the recommendation of Mr. Livingston is the chair of the committee is looking for someone very specific. And that specificity is somebody that has some, sorry, those are my words here, has some, has some skill in what you call graphic design. I understand that, you know, throughout the couple of years, even with my conversations with the chair of the committee, they're always looking for somebody to have a little more graphic design knowledge, to help with educational materials. Ms. Rumril, who did step down, was taking that on. And Mr. Livingston was chosen based on the recommendation that we need someone for graphic design. My concern with that is through ordinance, when it comes to us appointing these commissioners, that's not a power or duty of a commissioner. And that shouldn't be why we choose an applicant for the tree commission. It's very explicit that not only did we have three general public appointed, sorry, three applicants that wanted to be appointed, most of them met the requirements and had qualifications for the tree commission. I'm just going to list off the powers and duties, just, just so we have some vantage here on as far as what an actual commissioner does. Development of rules and regulations, offer written recommendations, review tree ward and recommendation of tree removal, and advocacy and public education. None of these are a, there's no prerequisite for graphic design. I really believe that if a commission needs help with anything with education materials, graphic design, they should be leaning on the city of Salem for resources to help them out with that. So, for that reason, you know, we had three applicants. One was before us three years ago. And we had a lot of great appointments at that point, and we did not appoint her. But I'm looking for an appointee that is committed to doing the work and will show up to meetings. So, with that, I'd like to make a, I'm sorry, I'm not done. The one thing I found concerning about this is I really have a problem with chairs of commissions trying to handpick applicants for their committee. I don't think that's appropriate. I belong to a few city state boards, and that's not really how it works. This is our opportunity to select someone that is qualified for the tree commission. And it's not necessarily what the chair is specifically looking for. That's really, to me, not appropriate. And I think the chair has to be considerate of, if there's applicants that want to be on the tree commission, we need to make sure that we look at all applicants fairly and consistently. So, for that reason, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Maria Connell to the tree commission as the general public appointment for the alternative position. Thank you.
Counsel Marcelo.
Thank you, President. I wish you had said all of this in the committee meeting, that, where we decided that, because that would have been part of the discussion. We did not really have a robust discussion. We had, we had a review of each candidate, and they came up and answered questions, and we looked at their resumes. When I made the motion, right, there was no discussion. That's when it should have happened. Listen, we had three people that are all qualified to be on that board. They are all qualified. All of their resumes talked about the gardening they do, the volunteerism that they do. Unfortunately, there's only one position, right? As the liaison to that commission, I did talk to the chair because we want to know what, what, what you need. And that's when she mentioned that she was losing those skills, the education and the graphic design skills. Now, there's nothing more transparent than these interviews for these, for these positions. Everyone was in the room. There was no, like, one person comes in and we have a, a talk, and then they go out, and the next person comes in, and so nobody knows what's happening. It was all in the public. And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here. I chose somebody who I thought would fill in the position that Jane Rumril was, was leaving. There was no, you know, call with the chair saying, you know, I want this person, I don't want that person. That did not happen. I was putting together what she was missing in Jane Rumril. Someone who has a profession in graphic design and is also an educator. It's exactly what they need as part of their commission. All of them are qualified, right? I wish we could hire all three of them to be on that commission because they're all very excited about the job. So, I don't want to make it sound like, you know, there was this heavy discussion about who we ended up voting for. I made the motion, it was seconded, and there was a vote. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Merkel.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. Yeah, it's, it's a tough situation that these, this isn't the usual process where it goes through the mayor's office. And I, I think the processes needs to be looked at, but that's a different conversation. But I think it's a conversation that we should have for this reason. I didn't, I thought, I do think it's appropriate that the chair of that commission, that her opinion and the conversation she has with the liaison of what she is looking for be considered. I, I do think that's appropriate. And as was said, we had three great applicants, and we're very fortunate for the incredibly qualified, enthusiastic applicants we get for our boards and commissions. I, I will point out that we were notified Maria Connell's application did miss the deadline, which, which matters to me. But that was my decision. My vote was based on the communication from the chair of that commission to the liaison. That was a factor. And I will point out too, that David Livingston, who was recommended, he did go first in the discussion. So, there was discussion before the other two. And please, anyone who was in the meeting, correct me if I'm remembering it incorrectly. But he did go first, and we did have a discussion and then further follow-up that, that was a factor in the decision for the skills that were expressed that was needed, before the next two candidates came up to talk about, you know, their reasons for wanting to join in their qualifications, and then to have follow-up discussion on that. So, I believe we did have, you know, appropriate opportunities to have conversations about this. But yeah, it, it just lands, it doesn't land well, the whole processes. But I do feel we did, as Counsel Marcelo said, we did follow the process that we do have in front of us. And that was the vote that was taken.
Counsel Stott.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. I wasn't there, but I did watch the meeting, as we all just heard. And I will say, this is an awkward process, as mentioned before. But we, we participate in this process at every meeting when we vote on the board appointments. It's just, we do that in a non-transparent manner. It is our responsibility to look at the mayor's appointees, contact them, ask them questions, see if it's a good fit for the board or committee. So, this is like a regular process that we have. In this situation, it is extremely transparent, which I could see it being, you know, that just makes it inherently awkward and uncomfortable for everyone involved, and not the most pleasant experience. But I will say, watching the meeting, I thought it was, I didn't come away with any, like, ooh, that, that was awkward or ish. Like, I thought it was well-run, it was kind of done in the best manner possible, and I thought we had great candidates in front of us. So, with that said, you know, as a member of a board in Boston for the past decade, I will say, like, working within the board and with members of the board and the chair is something important and is feedback that you would take in and trying to find out what needs and special skills of members of that committee are needed. And that's done all throughout the city and on our different commissions and boards, of which we, as councilpeople, are processes and part of for every single appointee we see in front of us. That is our responsibility. In this case, it's just extremely transparent, which is good. And I agree with Counsel Merkel that it should be looked at as to why. So, that's my note on that. I will say though, I definitely want to acknowledge, I wasn't at the meeting to do so, but I'm very excited to see Mr. St. Louis join this commission as an arborist. I think he's going to be a fascinating addition. He is just so intertwined with the community, already on the cemetery commission, a volunteer at Green Lawn, emailing me all the time, asking where trees can be planted in the neighborhood and who he can talk to about that. So, I'm very excited to see that we are able to finally fill that specific slot on the commission and doing so with Mr. St. Louis.
Counsel Jurslow.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. I actually have to agree with Counsel Verella. I know Maria Connell, and I, during her interview, she stated that she had applied a few years before for the position. So, I plotted her for, when she didn't get that position, for reapplying. So, I, I didn't know that she missed the deadline, as Counsel Merkel stated. I think they were all great candidates, and it was a hard, I'm not a member of the committee, but I was at the meeting, and I did, do not like the process. I have to agree with the other councilors on that. But I do have to agree with Counsel Verella, and I would reappoint Maria Connell to the board. Oh, I would second his motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. I think we can all agree that we need to change procedurally how we do this. It's not really fair to the applicants to come in and to interview them. My concern with what happened with that meeting was the line of questioning should have been consistent to all applicants. And that's, that's my concern, and that's why I'm bringing this tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. I was in the meeting, and I agree with Counsel Marcelo. It is definitely a very uncomfortable situation for us, and I can imagine for them, basically having to explain themselves in front of the other applicants. It's not like, you know, you're pulling them into a room and they can, and you know, and as far as the questions go, I didn't really feel that we were asking individuals individual questions. I think we basically asked them to tell us what they were bringing to the table as far as being on the commission. And again, all three of them were, you know, proper applicants. They all had good, good qualities. It just, this particular person had a quality that we just lost on the commission. And I do agree with Counsel Marcelo at that point, that being the liaison and the fact that if that's something they lost and that's something they want to try to gain, what good does it do to have somebody, I mean, I don't even know what the tree commission does, to be honest with you. But to sit there and talk about trees when they're looking for somebody that can educate the students or the kids or the public with graphic design and graphic arts to get them more involved as, as a whole. So, it doesn't, I, I just, you know, I think the decision that was voted on that night was actually the right decision for now.
Withdraw my motion.
Counsel Verella withdraws his recommendation. So, let's go back to the recommendation that all four members be, the recommendation that they be appointed, which would be, sorry, Counsel Marcelo.
Just one clarification on a point of order. Do we need to suspend the rules to vote on them tonight? Or do they need to be held under the rules? Because I would like to get them voted in because they are missing members. So, if we could suspend the rules, our rule that we keep them, hold them to the next meeting, could we do that first to suspend that rule?
Should we table?
No. No, we want to just suspend our own city council rule that, that this be held for, till the next meeting, which we do for all appointments.
I think we've discussed that in the past, and you could, we could suspend that rule if we wanted to vote on it tonight.
Okay. So, I move that we suspend that rule first.
Counsel Marcelo moves that we suspend that rule first.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, that matter carries. So, on Counsel Verella's recommendation, Jacob Lewis, David Livingston, Catty Goldfield, and that's it, be appointed to the tree commission. All those in favor? All those opposed? Communications from city officials.
Sorry, it just signed me out of the agenda software.
Yeah, page 10.
In the year 2025, an ordinance relative to traffic, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salem, as follows. Section 1, Section 74 of Vehicle VA be amended by inserting the following. North Street, general prohibition towing zone, south side from intersection with Simon Street, continuing in an easterly direction for 80 feet. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage. Thank you.
Counsel Stott moves for adoption by first, on first passage, under discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is a parking spot at the corner of North and Simon Street, as noted. Backup documentation from Lieutenant Tucker is available for review. But we essentially hatched out and removed this parking spot about six, eight months ago. It was before the beginning of the wintertime, due to concerns of residents backing out of a driveway, along with the intersection of Simons and Liberty Hill Street not having visibility. The hatching out of this one particular parking spot solved a lot of issues, and it should be made permanent. So, we need to actually re-hatch the no parking lines so they can be visible again, and in doing so, putting the actual no parking location in the ordinance books. It also is really close to a crosswalk as well, so it's really opening up that dilating invisibility for both the crosswalk, the driveway, and the intersection.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Stott's motion to adopt for first passage, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from city officials? Counsel Watson felt his absence tonight. I believe that maybe Counsel Hatworth, being very knowledgeable on this situation, can fill in.
In the year 2025, an ordinance relative to traffic be ordained by the city council of Salem as follows. Section 1, 58.
Wait, the reading?
Ah, thank you. I move for adoption for first passage.
Counsel Hatworth moves for adoption by first passage, under discussion.
Under discussion.
On Counsel Verella's motion that this matter be moved for adoption by first passage, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Glad we all did our homework. Further communications from city officials? Counsel Verella.
We have the following report from the planning board amending an ordinance relative to zoning, which is the Section 7 of the Special Residential District Regulations, by adding new Section 7.4 Smart Growth Overlay District.
Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Prozniewski. I move that this be received and filed.
Counsel Verella moves that this be received and filed, all in favor? Under discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from city officials?
We have an ordinance to amend an ordinance relative to zoning, to amend Section 7 Special Residential District Regulations by adding a new Section 7.4 Smart Growth Overlay District. Residential District Regulations by adding a new Section 7.4 Smart Growth Overlay District.
Counsel Verella.
Thank you, President Proznowski. I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Counsel Verella moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote, under discussion.
Thank you, President Proznowski. So this has been a long time coming. This has been in process for years, from the sale of the Salem State property, from the state, from DKM, all the way to where we're at now. So as we all know, what's in front of us is the 40R Smart Growth Overlay District. So obviously, tonight, we're going to be voting on this moving forward so this application can continue its procedure to the Executive Office of Livel Communities, I believe, and continue the process. When it comes to this development here in South Salem, this is something that is a benefit for not only the city. This will be the first 40R to continue its path, path forward. Not only will this benefit the city in tax revenue, currently, that property is exempt by the state and we do not collect any tax revenue on that property. Moreover, the proposal from Wynn Companies and Avalon Bay, they're meeting the, not only meeting the expectation for affordability, but they have a deeper affordability with the project, which I'm very excited about. So with that, I'd like to continue to see this move forward in its process and I hope my colleagues feel the same way. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Verella's motion. I'm sorry. Counsel Musillo.
Thank you, President. This came with some amendments that were requested from planning, that came from the Planning Board and then through the Planning Department. So there, if I can take a minute to sum up what, what those amendments are, some of them are definitions, the definition of landscape, how, how the review will go to, to put in a line that it includes a joint public hearing or a joint, sorry, a joint meeting with the Design Review Board. But then there's some language in here to change the, the minimum parking, no, the maximum, no, sorry. What are we making this? Maximum parking instead of minimum parking requirements. And so I don't have a problem with, with first passage tonight, but I would like to send this to committee before second passage in September or August, if we have a special meeting, to kind of go over that, that parking change and how they came up with those numbers. But I don't have a problem with the other requested amendments from planning and we could do those amendments in committee. They're, they're not really, they're not going to change anything in the, in the zoning, for sure.
Any further discussion?
I second Counsel Musillo's motion.
On the first matter, which is Counsel Verella's motion to adopt for first passage by roll call vote to amend the ordinance to zoning, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
You gotta do yours to send it, yeah?
First passage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then we'll send it to committee.
Counsel Verella?
Yes.
Counsel Stott?
Yes.
Counsel Musillo?
Yes.
Counsel Merkel?
Yes.
Counsel Jerslow?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Hapworth?
Yes.
Counsel Davis?
Yes.
Counsel Cohen?
Yes.
And Counsel Proznowski?
Yes. On Counsel Verella's motion for the adoption of first passage to amend the ordinance relative to zoning, we have ten in the affirmative, none in the negative, and one absent, that matter carries. On Counsel Musillo's motion, that the matter be sent to committee prior to second passage, seconded by Counselor Cohen, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from city officials?
That's a good point. I did not specify the, the committee. So the motion is to send it to Ola co-posted.
Thank you.
No further discussion? Okay.
And we have the Church Preservation Restriction Agreement between St. Nicholas Russian Orthodox Greek Catholic Church of Salem, Massachusetts, and the City of Salem by, through the Salem Historical Commission.
Counsel Jerslow.
Thank you, President Proznowski. I move that this be adopted.
Counsel Jerslow moves for adoption, under discussion?
Thank you. I'd like to provide a brief history of the St. Nicholas Russian Orthodox Church, one of Salem's most distinctive and historic landmarks. The church was built in 1908, 1908 and was designed by architect William DeVoe Deveraux Dennis. While its form reflects a common Western church layout, its rich ornamentation and distinctive architectural features, particularly the onion domes, reflect the Eastern European roots of its founding congregation. The rectory adjacent to the church was added in 1912, contributing further to the historic significance of the site as a spiritual and cultural center for generations of residents. This building not only represents architectural uniqueness, but also speaks to the diverse cultural history of Salem. The onion domes, or cupolas, are particularly iconic and have long been a symbol of the church's presence in the city. The Community Preservation Committee, through the Community Preservation Act, CPA, funds has recommended awarding $25,000 for the restoration of the church's two onion domes. This funding will support essential work, including the replacement of the slate roofing and copper flashing around the dome bases, repairs that are critical to preserving this building's structural integrity and historic character. I believe this church is an architectural treasure in our city and a symbol of the cultural richness that defines Salem. Preserving its features is not only investment in a building, but in the living history of our community. Therefore, I move that we adopt this appropriation of $25,000 in CPA funds to support the restoration of the St. Nicholas Russian Orthodox Church onion domes. And in doing so, we take an important step toward keeping Salem's history alive for future generations. And just a little, back on this, the historic commission voted to accept the responsibility that they will review any work going forward, and now the city council has to accept the restrictions. And all that was in the backup of our documentation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none on Counsel Jerslow's motion. For the Church Preservation Restriction Agreement between St. Nicholas Russian Orthodox Church and the City of Salem, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Petitions?
We have a petition from Comcast to install conduits on Essex Street and Union Street for service at 13 Hawthorne Boulevard.
Hearing ordered September 11th, 2025. Further petitions?
We have a petition from Liz and Wayne Malionich, residents of Jackson Street, to discuss traffic calming measures on Jackson and Broad Streets.
Counsel Musillo.
Thank you, President. I move that this be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Safety, and the Environment.
Counsel Musillo moves, goes into the Committee on Public Health, Safety, and Environment, under discussion?
Thank you, President. So this actually is a, a request to talk about making this permanent. And I feel their pain. I live right down the street there and I think this is a common concern when we put in temporary traffic calming measures, that it takes years and years and years for the city to prioritize the funding to make the permanent change. I will say, the, the city just received a grant to, to research ways to make the Broad Street Dalton Parkway corridor safer, including traffic calming measures that would become permanent. And this intersection that they're talking about, Broad Street and Jackson Street, is part of that corridor project. So, you know, it's fine that this goes to committee and we can have a discussion there. But I would also say that this is a larger issue in my mind and I think that we need to have a public discussion about whether the city can come up with a process or guidelines for moving the temporary installations to permanent once they've been proven to be successful. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On Counsel Musillo's motion that be referred to Committee on Public Health, Safety, and Environment, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have a request from the residents of Washington Square to hold a block party at Washington Square East and Boardman Streets to Forrester Street on August 10th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM with no rain date.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this be granted.
Counsel Hapworth moves that it be granted, under discussion?
Uh, no, if, if you were to vote no on this, then it would save me a lot of work on August 10th at 5:00 PM, but otherwise, I recommend you vote yes on this.
On Counsel Hapworth's motion that this move be granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Block party granted. Further petitions?
We have a request from the residents of Warner Street to hold a block party on August 31st, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM with no rain date.
Counsel Hapworth.
Thank you. I move this be granted.
Counsel Hapworth moves that matter be granted, under discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Block party on Warner Street granted. Further petitions?
We have the following three claims.
Counsel Hapworth.
Mr. President, I refer to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counsel Hapworth moves that these claims go to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petition?
We have the following public guides.
Counsel Hapworth?
Would these be granted?
Counsel Hapworth moves they be granted, under discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor, proving, proving these guides, public guides be granted? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business.
Nope.
One more.
We have the following drain layer applications.
Counsel Hapworth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move this be granted.
Counsel Hapworth moves the drain layers license be granted, under discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter granted. Unfinished business.
We have an ordinance amending traffic, Chapter 42, Sections 11, 51 and 51B, bus stops, parking prohibited on certain streets.
Counsel Cohen?
I move adoption for second passage.
Counsel Cohen moves for second passage, under discussion?
Absolutely no more discussion, please.
Counsel, Counselor Cohen to absolutely have no discussion on the second passage. All those in favor of the second passage of this ordinance? All those opposed? Matter carries. Seeing that this is the last formal meeting of the city council before the summer break, I think the public should know that if you've been listening, you can see that the council doesn't stop. It remains very busy with many numerous committee, committee, committee meetings that need to be hashed out before we come back and convene again for regular business in September. So for all those, I wish everyone a happy and relaxing, enjoyable summer. Counsel Musillo?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment? We are adjourned.